Residents.
Five hundred.
I was shocked then.
Five hundred people voted. Let's go over them.
Amen.
So it's from our township, five hundred.
Sorry, almost the same way at five hundred people vote for our town.
I don't.
Precinct I work.
Twenty seven years.
Apparently it's.
We're only thirty.
Precinct I work, four only at sixty-two.
Really?
Everybody ready?
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead and call on November twentieth, Orinoco Township planning advisor commission meeting's order. You can stand in place of agents. One of the citizens who did lie, be the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just for all. Thank you for that. And I'll say our next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda for tonight. We have approval of minutes, we have a continued item, initial use permit amendment. Um, by T and M, a discussion items update on zoning ordinance. Other business and insurance, any changes, additions or corrections?
I would like to add the one thing under other business, uh, on a, the unresolved variants that was approved by the board.
U N B V R.
On. U N B E R Z A G T.
U N B.
And I'll bring up what has been a meeting Monday night because he showed up.
Oh, trust me.
And unresolved, what was it?
Uh, variants.
variants. Okay, any other changes, corrections or additions other than one from Mr. Record?
Age six. That doesn't turn us.
Well, that's.
That's what.
Well, it's a metaphor. Oh, I'm, this is agenda.
I'm way ahead of it.
I'll.
So I didn't see, she missed last.
I'll put the agenda with the one addition.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Record and a second by Ms. Metzke. To approve the agenda with the addition of unresolved variants. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay. Approval of minutes. Did you have a comment?
Just the one. Page that. He didn't have me down, it's. Taking a motion, seconding a motion.
Oh, unpacked at page six.
At the bottom.
Angela, maybe once you play the public hearing, when you say you need sort of stuff that is.
I believe it was Ms. Madsen.
Any, any other changes or corrections? Motions?
Approved, I, something emotionally approved minutes with the one change.
And motion by Mr. Record and a second by Ms. To approve the minutes with the one correction on, um. Should be Ms. Madsen, Ms. Bird. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to our continued item, Orinoco Township Conditional Use Permit Amendment. O R two zero two three, that is number zero one C U P by T and M, popping into the Orinoco. I assume that's a signal for the staff update.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Allison Sosa, I am the new associate director for the Homestead County Planning Department. Everyone received an email from me on Friday evening. Um, I'm here tonight with our director, Dave Dunn, and senior planner, senior planner, Ali Bosco. Um, I'm going to be presenting to you tonight on this conditional use permit amendment. Um, as the chair stated, it is a continuation from your October sixteenth meeting. Okay, just some general information for the board, I know not all of you were here at the last meeting. Um, this is generally just a, some general information about this site. It's about twenty acres in size, as you can see on the right side of the screen. Um, the site's outlined in blue, it's about twenty acres in size, it's located on the south side of Minnesota Lane and on the west side. On the right side, on the west side of Minnesota Avenue. Um, the zoning district is the Ark Lily zoning district, which is a, uh, land intensive, uh, district. It's got land intensive uses, but with a low traffic and low water flow. So, as we mentioned, this is an amendment to an approved conditional use permit from over the summer. So, on the left-hand side of the screen, on kind of the green box there, you can see the approved site plan. Um, what that shows is approximately a ten thousand square foot personal storage building. Um, access on to Minnesota Lane and then some, um, you know, I don't know if that's parking or turnaround space, but some impervious surface on to the right, on the right side of the building. So, on the right side of your screen is the amendment, this is really the bulk of what you are looking at this evening. So, as you can see on the right-hand side of the page. Um, the building has shifted approximately a hundred and forty feet to the south. This is only a snip of the site, the site is much larger, we're very much on the north side of the site. So, um, the bulk, the remainder of the land is, um, is not shown on the site, but the building's been shifted on about a one hundred and forty feet to the south. There's been an addition of eight hundred, eight hundred square foot vestibule over here on the right side of the building. Um, additional impervious surface has been added, that includes, um, a wraparound on the west side or on the left side of the building. And you can't really see it in this image, but the driveway location has also, uh, been modified. So, this image is really just showing, um, an overlay. Um, the pink highlighted, excuse me, that's yellow, the yellow highlight is the original approval, that really shows that location of the original driveway access. Um, the building and it's overlaid on top of what the applicant is proposing, uh, this evening. So, at the last meeting, those of you that were here, you remember that there was, uh, quite a bit of deliberation, um, on the board. About whether to approve, what kind of conditions, um, and what to add. Um, the board identified really four areas where there were concerns. Um, there was concerns about the addition of that vestibule, that wraparound driveway on the west side of the site. As well as the addition of propane, heat and well-inseptic on, on the site. Um, at the end of your last meeting, what, uh, what happened was the board asked for a continue, or didn't ask, the board continued the application. Um, in order to, uh, and asked staff to take a look at the criteria that are required in order to add some conditions that would address the concerns that were identified by the board. So, that's what you have in your packet tonight, you've got an alternative set of findings. Um, they are, they show up on your packet, on the packet page ten, that might be a little different, um, than the staff report. But on the packet page ten. Um, and really the change in findings, um, are a little bit in addition to finding number one and finding number three. Um, I'll read this quickly, this is really just a summary of those findings, but this is what you have to do in order to, um, add conditions to prohibit the. The wraparound driveway, the vestibule bathrooms and heat. So, I'll read this just really briefly, um. Finding one, we added the language that says to ensure the proposed conditional use is not injurious. Injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other property, the addition of an eight hundred square foot vestibule, heat and bathroom should not be allowed. And then to finding number three, uh, to prevent erosion to the property of Minnesota Lane, the wraparound driveway on the west side of the building shall be, shall be removed. So, that was really the two, um, additions to the, the findings. The, the conditions get a little bit more complicated, uh, because you've got a draft set from the planning team where we've, we've crossed out and underlined. Um, and then your attorney also provided, um, a, a set. So, what I suggest tonight is if the board's direction is to, um, approve alternative findings, that you really go with what your attorney suggested. Not a whole lot different than, um, than what the planning team suggested, uh, but that. Going to say, let's forget about the, um, alternative conditions and signings for the staff report, you feel like what your attorney presented. Um, I've, I've sent those all out to you the end of last week, I sent them to the applicant's, um, consultant. The applicant, there's also a couple of copies here for anybody in the public who might be around, so they are readily available for anybody who is interested in seeing them. Um, so really the board have two options this evening that I see, at least two, um, that I see maybe, uh, the direction going. Option A, simplicity, is to adopt the October sixteen findings and conditions. That is the staff recommendation, um, you can find that in your packet, um, on page twenty days. So, basically verbatim, what was presented to you last month. Option B is to adopt alternate findings and conditions, um, we stated earlier on the record. That would allow for conditions to remove the vestibule, the wraparound driveway, bathrooms and heat from the site. Again, if that's the direction of the board, um, we're going to go with your attorney's, um, findings and, and conditions. Here it's of a draft motion, again, option A and option B. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer these questions, uh, my.
Any questions for Allison? If I mistakenly called you Al and you Allison or something, forgive me.
That's fine, absolutely, I respond to both.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Um, so. At the last meeting, for those of you that weren't here, um, we did close the public hearing. Um, so unless we have a specific question we want to ask somebody, I don't know that there's a reason to open the public hearing at this time.
Perfect.
Um.
About chair?
Yes.
Uh, at the end of the last meeting, it was specifically stated that there would be a public hearing, which is why I drove down and willing to attend this meeting. So, I, I would ask for the right to, to speak and present for, we're, we're both here because of that representation that there would be a reopen public hearing.
Um, okay, I thought I said we could, didn't say we would.
It always said that the board will reopen it, yes.
As it means. All right, with that, I would like a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Anyone here reopen the public hearing? Excellent.
Hey, I have a motion by Mr. Record and a second by Ms. Bird to reopen the public hearing. I will ask three times, uh, sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, I will ask three times, if anybody would like to speak for or against this application. Why am I not surprised to you here, Jason?
You all know who I am by now, Jason Kappers with Cheeky Engineering, the record address is one four zero seven zero. Highway fifty-two southeast Chatfield, Minnesota, five five nine two three. Um, this, first of all, it's kind of a boilerplate statement, all the additions that we're talking about tonight and that you guys will be kind of, um, deliberating on and talking on are. Meeting, uh, Homestead County and your ordinance, the section four point oh two, your conditional use permit, numbers one through eight. Um, there was kind of, kind of open discussion at the last meeting that I didn't really have the notes prepared, but I'd just like to. Now regarding stormwater, um, specifically on like the west side of the building. Um, I believe the neighbor to the west had some concerns about runoff, both entering, potentially entering her property and then also reaching Minnesota Lane to the north. Um, I went through some calculations, um, and for both watersheds that drain onto the property, they're both under one acre. Um, and I did some swell calculations that were providing along the west side of the building, to the west of the wraparound. So, the, the wraparound is, but it's right up next to the building and then it drains to a swell, like a ditch. Then that ditch conveys stormwater both to the north to the culvert and then to the south. So, that ditch at its current design geometry, um, I can go through that a few like, has a capacity of about twenty-seven cubic feet per second. And with the contributing watershed to it, it, it's only five cubic feet per second, so it's not even using twenty-five percent of the swell capacity. So, there's zero issue regards to engineering standards when it comes to swell capacity conveying stormwater. Um, and also, the culvert, I think there's concerns about the culverts and the stage storage and whether or not water would overtop Minnesota Lane and cause erosion on that roadway. Um, as it's designed, we have a fifteen-inch corrugated metal culvert called out, um, upstream invert of one thousand fifty-two. Downstream invert of one thousand fifty, and the cul-de-sac is at one thousand fifty-four, so there's actually two feet of what we call stage storage between the culvert invert. And the top of Minnesota Lane where it overtop. And the hundred-year, uh, I just mentioned was about five cubic feet per second. Um, and that corresponds to an elevation of one thousand fifty-three twenty-eight, which is point seven two feet below. Um, and typical engineering standards, when we design culverts, we design to a twenty-five-year event. Um, this takes, this conveys the hundred-year event, so there's going to be no issue with stormwater overtopping Minnesota Lane. So, that was. Thank you.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason.
Good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, my name is Brian Huntington, I'm a shareholder with the lot for the Larkin Hoffman. In the packet, there was a letter from me dated October twenty-fourth that hopefully you all had an opportunity to see. As was mentioned, we're here tonight, I have a page for an amended conditional use permit. Just as if this were an original conditional use permit application, the criteria stated in your ordinance, section four point zero two A, throw the decision. So, if the project meets those criteria, approval is mandatory as a matter of law. Staff has recommended, uh, findings approving the project in full, and it's significant that here tonight, they stand by that original recommendation. And we agree with staff that the project, every element of the project does meet CUP criteria. The decision should not rest upon criteria non-found in your ordinance, such as whether it's believed that. All elements of the project are strictly necessary. Absent an inconsistency with your legislatively adopted criteria contained within your code. The landowner may incorporate building ordinance, building elements and improvements as the landowner deems desirable. The town has no authority to prohibit elements such as heat and sanitary facilities, these are not prohibited by your code. The project satisfies your CUP criteria, and the concerns about improper usage can be accounted for, and in fact, the variety of conditions have accounted for. Concerns about, uh, improper usage of the storage facility such as for overnight accommodation. There's no basis to reject the wraparound driveway based upon water runoff concerns, you've just heard. The extensive modeling of drainage for the project has taken place, the modeling did account for every element of the project that's before you tonight. And it reflects that the culvert is more than sufficient to convey, convey water away from the cul-de-sac. Predicting water runoff is clearly a matter requiring expert analysis. The finding regarding the sufficiency of the drainage have been questioned by any contrary expert. It would be arbitrary and capricious for the town to reject the findings and conclusions of applicant's expert. I do want to discuss a few specific conditions, which have been proposed by staff. And. Which have been proposed by city attorney's office. Starting with condition number fifteen. Applicant and successors and assigns may access the personal storage building located on the property at any time. However, all activities on the property must be contained in the personal storage building. To be located on the property between the hours of nine P M and seven A M. There shall be no activities within the parking areas or green spaces on the property between the hours of nine P M and seven A M. I think there's an inherent inconsistency within the condition. You can access this anything that you can't drive to the building, if that's the way I read it, after all, this is a storage facility. Uh, I'm not sure what's meant by that time prohibition. I believe that time prohibition is unnecessary, you already have a different condition there about, uh, prohibition on occupancy. I think that's more than sufficient, an arbitrary window is, is simply not necessary to effectuate the intent. Of prohibiting this for uses of residency. There is a difference between the original staff findings and the city attorney recommended findings. Um, condition number twenty-three.
Excuse me, I assume you're talking township attorney?
Yes, sorry, township attorney. Twenty-three in the original staff conditions. Um, has dropped. From the township's attorney's conditions, we read that should drop.
Um, which one, because the numbers on our original findings were off by one, so.
Okay. Applicant shall provide access to the property at all reasonable times to the township or its representatives. For purpose of inspection, which are compliant with terms of the submitted conditional use permit. The property in operation shall be available for inspection by the authorized township inspectors, then business working hours on reasonable basis notice to the applicant. But that condition is not appropriate, there are no, there are no permitted uses in this zoning district. Every use is by conditional use permit, you cannot condition properties development based upon the landowner's waiver. Of the right to exclude people from their premises, and after all, usually to go on a property, you need probable cause and a warrant. Uh, I've never seen it before where there is such a wide-open invitation for members of the government to access the property. Likewise, in the original conditional use permit, conditions, now these are included also in the township attorney conditions. There's a provision in there which reports to require indemnification of the landowner. Uh, again, just for developing one's land, and I would submit that is an enforceable condition, again, I've never seen it before in any other jurisdiction. But after all, we're here on a conditional use permit, we meet the findings of the ordinance, we're entitled to that permit. And I don't think that provision would stand up in court. Um, so for all these reasons, I would ask that the. That this board recommend approval based upon staff's original findings with modifications made with the specific conditions of approval that I've just discussed. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't remember your name.
Yes, Brian Huntington.
Any questions from Mr. Huntington? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against this application? Last call, anybody like to speak for or against this application? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm going to close the public hearing. So, here.
And motion by Mr. Record and a second by Mr. Colbert to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay. Um, so. So, I spent a significant amount of time, went through all the information we have on this. I listened to all the previous public hearings. And, um. And my personal opinion. Um, and I'm working, just step by, I'm working off the findings that Mr. Ruby sent us. Our attorney's findings, those are the ones I'm, I'm looking at. And I, I did compare them to what their, um, staff put together and they are very, very similar. Um. But after, after reading through all the information and listening to the previous public hearings. Um. The primary, one of the primaries, probably fifty percent of the conversation was on the draw. Um, and then, um. Uh, and then, of course, uh, the building location and the drainage and all, and all. And after reviewing all of that, I have come to the conclusion. This is my conclusion, um, needs your draft alternative findings or needs to review. Um, I, um, I'm going to skip to the conditions. Um. Condition number one talks about we have a square footage. Um. Then here for Paul, the one of our community meetings, there's a section that did only four minutes that. Through administratively, there, there was a, um, mistake and Mac never died included on the township. And we cannot be less restrictive using all of the council. The county says that my building cannot be more than ten thousand square feet. The eight hundred foot addition puts it over ten thousand. So, in my view. Um. That, uh, Mr. Ruby wrote up, it says, the applicant shall resubmit a site plan and area plan without the underscore foot. And, and I'm okay with that, because then we are now being less restrictive in account. Um, now, it's possible that the site could be rezoned and then that could be added in, but that would be a separately now, we're.
So, staff missed that when they had their staff findings?
Originally, because in our, in our township ordinance.
Hmm.
The section, it's section D, it's missing from each one of the. The zones, that section D isn't in any of them. And at some point, and Christie made the comment during the meeting that somehow that got dropped and then gets. When we moved over, didn't get copied over to ours.
Sure.
And so, in ours, it looks like there is no.
I'm sorry, so put a clarification on that, we did look, um, quite extensively at, um, what happened in between, um, you know, the Orinoco, uh, zoning ordinance, um, in the Homestead County. Um, there's no indication there was a mistake or an error made on behalf of the planning department. It looks like i- it could have been, I'm not saying it's not, but there's no, nothing that indicates either way if it was a mistake or if there was actually, um, a reason for it. And there are a couple of other instances, at least one comes to mind where, um, where Orinoco is a little bit different than, than the township. Uh, excuse me, than, than, um.
Than the.
The county.
Of our river corridor.
River corridor, it's also, also about feedlots, I know there's going to be a conversation about feedlots later on. So, there are a couple of examples where Orinoco is a little bit different in Homestead County, so I would just ask that we don't call it an error on behalf of, uh, the, the planning department. It's been left out, we can correct it if that's the direction, um, the board wants to go, so.
But. But somehow, if it was in the county and we took the counties and made changes on feedlots and river corridor. I'm not sure why, how that got dropped, if, if a matter, it's not for this, this issue, but. Um, so anyway. Um, but the county still states our total is no more than ten thousand square.
Without a CUP or without rezoning?
Without, without rezon.
Yeah.
Um. Um, so, so I'm, I'm okay with that one, two and three are, are pretty basic.
Back to one. So, the last segment says. Talking about the, we shall not be allowed. Under one.
Yeah.
I would say that.
Um.
Draw.
On the conditions.
Alternative findings.
I'll start the finding, which one do I? Or it says, to achieve the proposed conditional use is not injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood and will not significantly diminish or impair values of such property. The addition of eight hundred square foot, those are findings, I'm, I'm on the condition.
Yeah.
Well, which also is a mine.
Um, so we've got enough here, let's clean where, where that, the draft.
All right.
Actually, that's what it says.
It's right after the findings involves.
Okay.
Sorry.
Edit.
Yeah, skip, skip the findings, okay, so they're pretty, pretty much.
The one is.
Number two, number three are pretty basic. Um, number four. The, the driveway, so, um. We have to, have to remember that the driveway is actually not the purview of this commission. Driveway permits are reasonably soundable. Um. But, um, because of the overhead door that was installed on the north end of the building to make it easier to get in and out. I don't see the necessity for the wraparound driveway. However, that is not our decision, that will be a town board decision.
Well, but the, the wraparound isn't. That's not a, the driveway issue is from the township road onto the property.
Right.
Once you get onto the property, that's no longer, that's no longer the township's responsibility, correct?
Right.
You're only talking the right away part.
Where's second?
So, the, the wraparound is part of the CUP. Because the township shouldn't have any, any say as to.
Because the township shouldn't have any, any say as to, I shouldn't say any say, but they don't have any responsibility after the road right away. Then it's not right problem.
Okay. Um. But the um, but the. In the here he has written applicant may leave on the property when new dot install.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think he should change that to south. And looking ahead to if this property is going to split or whatever. Um. We don't want that removed. So I think.
What moves that one?
Number four. Yeah, it's the second to the last. Um, number five, the applicant shall receive a new approved driveway permit for the new location. Um, I think number six and number seven should be stricken. After looking at the previous. Public hearing, both of them were some women who we did not have. Anything specific happening. Um, number eight, all um, all. Grading plans, sex plans, permits, such could be like a move based on the new location, the building and, and the driveway. Um, everything else I think is also. Um. Um. I know the gentleman earlier said that he'd never seen these before. Um, our township attorney says. That fully that these are globally included in, in everything that he does.
So it was just a tool that he mentioned about that.
Yeah, so. So really, my, my, my changes were the. Were the um, the addition and the um, striking six and seven. And then, and a change in the major shop. And fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen.
Twenty-three, twenty-fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen hours.
And the reason that was put in there was so that there weren't any outdoor gatherings. That would, because this is a storage unit, so it's not for having fun.
No, it's not for having parties, but you'll also be in there putting things away. Obviously, we know.
But it's stating outside.
Yeah.
Anything else, it should be contained within the property. Within the building. Between those.
Well, something else, if, if we're allowing the, you know, the propane, so like. We're on number fourteen, cold storage building.
That brings the change.
Yeah.
What's that?
You shouldn't have caught the cold storage building anymore.
And, and that, that's, we can start that.
Well, should we, can we just get rid of the last sentence? It's a little. redundant and we're not specifying anything about people driving or being loud or whatever, packing their stuff up, but. It's still needing, things have to happen within the building itself. Which implies they cannot happen. In the instance. And get rid of maybe some of that. Lack of clarity that things.
Yeah, but do we also want to allow? Things going in and out, you know, two in the morning.
No, I think the hours are fine. We have hours of operations and all sorts of stuff. And I just think we don't need the last sentence.
I see what you're saying, because it says that all activities shall be inside the property or inside the building. From nine AM to seven AM. Nine, did I say AM?
Yeah, so. There, there have been a, a lot of. Phones and contention in this application. Um, you know, I went, I went through at our last meeting a number of. Times, uh, yeah, it was notified of. Missteps. And um. And after, like I said, after reading through all the material and listening to the previous. Eight hours of public hearings. Um. I, I think. In, in my mind, I think this becomes a. A, a win-win for both parties. The applicant is getting. Pretty much what he is asking for. Um. And so. That's where I'm at. Um. As I said, I spent a lot of time going through this and then. You know, makes your head spin, but. But I tried to, tried to sort through it and, and lay out what I, I felt was the right thing to do. So.
So ours zoning ordinance doesn't say anything about the arc lily being, having to be under a thousand feet, correct?
But we can't be less restrictive because the county, so the county stays ten thousand. So.
We, yeah.
We can't be less, so it's got these ten thousand. We can be more restrictive.
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
So then what, what I'm trying to just wrap my head around right now is, you know, I'm looking at the original findings and recommendations, staff recommended approval. Even though it is over ten thousand square feet in an arc lily, correct? But the county says it has to be ten thousand feet or under.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that question, what, what happens there, um. The more or less restrictive piece, that comes up during the. Drafting of the language, it's not meant to be on a case by case basis, so that should have been caught if, if that truly is uh, less, less restrictive. Um. During the adoption of that zoning code, it really is not intended to be going back on a case by case. Now that you identified it, it's identified that there is a distinction. That the board either didn't intend or, or no longer wants, really the remedy there is uh, to go through a text amendment to. Put that language back into the ordinance.
Wh- which I agree we need to do, but. As always, we operate that we can't be less restrictive of the county.
So the county stands.
So if county was recommending. Provoke a larger than ten thousand squares of building.
That's what I'm still struggling with.
It would be our opinion that because the zoning codes are different, that this does not apply here. That would be the opinion of county staff. Now, I understand that there's been some conversation about which one's more restrictive, but the, the problem is that there's other things that are different between the two as well. So it's hard to take just one piece out of it.
So since April, we've been operating that we are gonna follow the ten thousand because that's what the county says, right? But now the county says what they say, it doesn't matter, you can just do whatever. Evidently.
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused, I'm trying to understand, yeah, so confused. Well.
Is Mark here?
He know.
So since April, it's been saying arc lily is ten thousand square feet.
But it's not written in our zoning.
But it's not in our zoning, but it doesn't have to be. This is a county, so we, that correct?
That's what we've done.
That's what we've, that's how we've always operated.
Yep.
Okay, and we've always operated.
Oh yes.
Okay.
And some. For whatever reasons, that didn't get. Included in our version.
But we're not teaching, we're not creating this situation.
No, we see that.
Just wanted me to.
I don't have problems taking out seven or. Let's talk about the wraparound driveway. Get that down there.
So the wraparound driveway to me doesn't, that's not a huge sticker point for me. Anybody that's ever driven anything big knows it takes a lot of room to turn that stuff around. You know, i- if you can pull in, the worst thing a guy can do is when you're backing up, that's how you're not paying attention. You know, so if you're backing out, out of any of the doors, or if you're having a backer on the corner so he can get himself turned around to go back up the driveway. Whether he's backing a boat, backing an RV, backing his motor home, that's how accidents happen. If you can back out the door and pull around.
But here's the thing, parking, he's got a lot more space on east side of the road.
Well, I, I tell you, in my opinion, like looking at this now, if you don't want him trying to get situated in the cul-de-sac. Putting his, their headlights into the neighbor's yard, they can drive straight in. Come around like they're heading back out and then back into that big building. That's what I think, I was, if Mark were here, I'd ask him, that would be safer. That's probably what he's trying to do and accomplish. Without getting backed up and then backing all the way into that building.
Yeah.
So he can come in and go around, get facing back out and then back into that overhead door that he put on.
Can you go up there and?
This is my, what I think he's doing.
Point.
I think that he's instead of trying to maneuver and get himself in a backing, you know, going up into her driveway and then trying to back in. He's gonna drive up, drive in his driveway, come around. Get facing here and then back in, so that he's not trying to come in here. He would have to come this way and then he's gonna, he's gonna be trying to get back inside here. That's what, if he were here, I'd ask him.
Or if he backs out of that north overhead door, he's gotta back down to the driveway, then go to the east side and get turned around. Or this way, you can just swing right around. I under, I understand what he's trying to do.
I think that's what he's trying to do. That way, he's not doing it in that cul-de-sac, which is gonna cause headache for neighbors or whatever. And/or he's gonna back into somebody coming home, he's not gonna see him. It would be safer to do what he's proposing with that driveway.
For that one door.
So they come around and they aren't trying to back in to get into there with this larger stuff.
Okay, so show me what happens to those side ones, like.
So if it were me and I were driving in the driveway with a boat and a truck and a SUV, I'm coming forward, here I'm coming down. I come around like this. I turn, get my front end out and I back my unit in. I come around and I back in. Same thing over here. Otherwise, he's coming in. He's, he's forced to try to come down and he gets to here and then he's jimmying. To get in and out. So what he's trying to do is come in, back in, come in, back in and come out. I think. I got a thumbs up, I'm on the right bandage. Why he's trying to leave him is to keep him out of the cul-de-sac. So he's not trying to get positioned to back into that facility.
Anytime you're trying to maneuver bigger things, it's just, it takes a lot of space.
Yeah.
And based on the fact the driveway is in a different location and the building's in a different location, that's why we didn't see that on the first plan. So once the building.
Space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, and yeah, because there was, after listening to the previous public hearings, there was no talk originally about.
And he was talking about a, a much wider area. Looks to me here than right here. So the building shift and it gives them, it keeps them out of the road trying to get positioned in my.
What number is that one?
I think that'll help keep. What he's trying to do from happening in the circle position. I would probably strike that, let him come in, get off and, and, and get situated where he's not. Trying to do it out in the circle.
So you're saying resubmit a site plan, grading plan. We were talking about striking that sentence. Do we have?
No, number four, applicant struck one property.
So resubmit a grading plan and strike out without the rear wraparound. Right?
Yeah.
And the sentence immediately.
Well, they, they just talked about basically they storm a lot and how that's gonna be with the wraparound.
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
And I asked, I understood the, the dream, so then we talked about that last month too. So, so you're saying on number four, that second sentence without the rear wraparound.
Actually, I identified two different space, different area, so I don't think that you need both.
So the rear wraparound, yeah. So I think number four is just that.
And I was gonna take it out.
Shall at all times comply with approved site by other.
Right, so everything up to applicant shall comply.
Yes.
Tanny, is the, so number five. If we're, we're out of the word.
So number four would say applicant shall at all times comply with your approved site and grading plan. And then applicant shall leave on the property when new dot install. So number five.
So. There's still not advisory from which we gave them.
We issued one, that was the approved site plan. We did approve that one, but then. The other one was intended and that was not approved. So my understanding is he wants to get approval for the unapproved one now.
This one is more in the cul-de-sac than the first one.
Further in the cul-de-sac, closer to the residence, but all we're gonna ask from the town board perspective is that he. You know, come to us with another driveway permit request so that we can look at that.
The staff people recommended that he have taken a new driveway permit.
Well, so. So my question is, is getting a new driveway permit or gone?
Not necessarily, I mean, I can't say one way or another, but we're gonna do next month. It becomes next month.
Really, it says shall apply for Andrew C. So.
He, he, he applied for it, I think it was on Fridays, but it hasn't been. Approved.
Yeah, I mean, if we did approve it, yeah, I stopped with. Probably change things.
Uh, he would just have to, I mean, if you look at the original site plan, you'd have a curve leading up to the driveway as to the, you know. So we can, we can move forward with our part of it.
Okay, you don't need, I just want to know how that could be, like if, if that.
I just want to say one way or another with the town board.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. I just wasn't sure if anything in here with that wraparound driveway hinge on.
Yeah, because you're, once you're into the property, then it's private property.
That's.
As long as you abide by the grading plan.
Yep.
That's. Um, six and seven. Breaking them. Um, eight, number eight just talked about making sure that all those plans and permits are. Current and updated with the new. Building location and driveways, I don't get this. And then, like I said, I think. And number fourteen, we're going to. Take off the word cold.
Yeah, you got that on thirteen too.
Anywhere, anywhere it says cold storage, you just say storage building.
And are we gonna strike the last sentence on fourteen? Yes.
Let's go to fourteen again.
Yep.
Overall activities on the property must be contained within the cold storage building to be, to be located on the property between the hours of nine PM and seven AM.
Well, he can do anything they want, right? It just has to be inside during those hours. After nine, at nine and seven in the morning, any activities should be inside the building.
Laura's right though, the way it reads it.
Yeah, you know.
If any activities ever happens, there has to be happening. So it needs to just be. Reworded somehow.
Yeah. It doesn't read.
It does not read right.
It's the thing, you can do everything.
You can do everything.
Since all activities on the property must be contained within the storage building.
To be located between the hours of nine PM.
But within the storage building. Is, the way I'm reading it, it's gotta be with inside the building.
So we should put no other.
All activities, I'm not sure what the rules for that, that's not even.
My, my question on that one is peoples in at eleven o'clock at night with the pickup and a boat, just got home, he can obviously pull into his.
Right, yeah.
But the way this reads is yeah, he wouldn't be able to, so that, well, I'm just, I'm just stating that out, that the way it reads, he wouldn't be able to enter.
Access it at any time, any day, anytime. I don't know how you could write that. Basically, uh, you can.
If that's the case, I don't think you try to rewrite it, then you scratch it.
It says somewhere else.
You, you could put in there something about no excessive noise from nine PM to seven.
Have a noise ordinance in our township, so it's not necessary. If you break the noise ordinance. We put that in the condition.
That's what I'm saying, we could just potentially strike it altogether. We can strike it.
Fourteen altogether.
Rereading.
The other thing that um, you brought up earlier is um, um, number twenty-one. Applicant shall provide access to the property to the township or its representatives for purposes of inspection.
Does that just go with the annual review? Or is that?
We don't have.
There is one about in here about annual review.
Number twenty is that we will conduct a annual review.
May conduct.
May conduct.
May conduct. Yeah, it's not. Not will, may.
It's may. And my guess is that a review in number twenty, a review for allowing an inspection in twenty-one would be if we receive a complaint.
Wouldn't that be the compliance officer, correct? That would be sent out.
Yeah, and it says to township or its representatives.
Yeah, wouldn't be the clients. So when, if, so number twenty or twenty-one. The only reason we'd ever have to go up there is that there was complaints. We wouldn't be the ones who will. It would be staff's compliance officer verifying. I think that one could actually. The way it's reading that.
You could, you could strike the first sentence. If you want, because the next sentence says property and operations shall be available for inspections by the authorized township inspectors. There's your.
Sores and advanced notice.
I could get a part of that.
Can I ask a question about square twenty? That we, the township may, can you guys inhale?
You know why it's there.
I know why it's there, but what I wanna know is we have had very little compliance with this to date. So, to ensure compliance means what exactly? What happens if compliance isn't occurring? Because so far, nothing has happened. And I just go, and I don't know if this is the right vehicle for, I don't know, but I do have this question, because another cease and desist letter came out. Evidently, did I see an email that came out? And what we've got for? I didn't see the letters, I don't.
Oh, the um, cease and desist was to stop the work until this amen, amenity.
Okay, and is that because work was continuing even though the amenities you hadn't been spotted on? Okay, so.
And work, work did stop.
I did see that and I appreciate that. So I guess I'm just wondering what twenty actually means.
Give this thing to stand on if we do have to have actions.
Should it change from storage unit to something else?
What actions can we take?
Uh, that's the compliance, that's the compliance officer.
So, so if there was a complaint. And the compliance officer goes out there and figures out what's wrong. Then typically, our attorney would send a letter saying you have thirty days to bring it into compliance. And then if they don't, then they give another letter saying you have seven days or we will whatever option is the right option to do. You could revoke the CUP, you could take them to court, you could make them tear down the building, you know, whatever the appropriate action was, depending upon the application. That's standard procedure, that's not specific thing to.
So, so when all of these violations were occurring to date? And the letters went out, the thirty, within the thirty days, the initial thirty days to remedy it, they were all remedied within the thirty days? Okay, and so then did a second letter go out that said you need, you have seven days to remedy this or else?
No, the letter that went out said to cease and desist. It didn't, until this was approved, it didn't say corrective action.
So I get, so I'm just trying to understand the whole procedure, even aside from this, like, um, so even previous letters, so that was the most recent, but there were previous letters that went out as well. So, was there never any like consequence provided aside from the letter?
That would, I think, um, be a question for staff. Because we did not, our attorney did not issue any letters until the most recent one. Of one of their goal or whatever that was. And um, and we weren't involved in anything within inspections of compliance issues. So what happened, um, whenever they went out there, when actions were taken, I'm, I'm not aware. They may have some letters, but I wasn't. I don't think any of us were.
What I'm trying to understand.
Generally speaking, yeah, madam chair, a good point, and just to kind of build off it, I mean, generally if we, you know, we get a complaint and all zoning enforcement is done on a complaint basis, so if we get a complaint, we'll send our inspector out there to do an evaluation, yeah, generally he'll go out, check out the site. If there isn't, if there is a violation, he'll actually try to knock the door and see if he can gain voluntary compliance. Uh, because generally it's in a residential home, so try to get voluntary compliance, send a letter out, can't get that, this is you have thirty days to cure. Do another follow-up inspection, if that happens, usually then there's kind of another letter that says, usually it's a week. And then what would happen is that we would refer that to the township attorney for potential legal action at that point. And that would be, you know, that's how this would be enforced, is through the township's attorney. You know, could file suit against the person who was in violation.
Okay, and so the applicant was always responsive within that thirty days according to the criteria that you threw out?
I'm not sure how that all played out, I'm just kind of generally, that's how the process would move forward, I think some of this was confusing frankly because of the unique relationship that Olmsted County and Orinoco Township have. And differences and because of the zoning ordinance being different, and then the enforcement mechanisms are slightly different. And the fact that we use the township's attorney and not the county attorney staff. And so I think this has been a learning curve for all of us, and I have a page of notes that at some point in the not-too-distant future, I'd like to talk about as to how as we move forward together, we can kind of think, how do we do this, it's a little easier to understand and makes more sense.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna make sure if we have something like twenty in there, compliance isn't happening, that something actually does happen to ensure compliance.
But we would not, I mean, generally we would be going out there on a complaint basis, so if it was turned into a junkyard and you said, hey, there storing junked vehicles out there, that would be the kind of thing that would ask, that would have us open it up. It would not generally be us going out and every year going and having a system in place to go out and review a condition of use permit.
So how, how does this happen logistically? If we decide we wanna conduct an annual review? And it's complaint driven.
We don't.
We, we don't, we don't. Yeah, mo- most everything is complaint driven. Um, the only time I'm aware of that there was an annual review required was, it wasn't even in our township, it was um, southeast of Rochester, there was a church that wanted to build new building. And they had, we put a requirement on them that they hadn't come back to towns planning commission every year so that we could make sure that they were making some progress. Because we approved the, the CUP, and if you don't, if there's no action taken in twelve-month period, that CUP is no longer active. So we required them to come back. And we did that like three years, and each time they had made some steps forward. And then we gave them five years and then that was it. But that, that's the only time I'm ever aware that there was actually annual reviews conducted.
So this is basically saying, if we get a complaint. Then we may open the vehicle up and take another look and see, make sure everything's on track and but we're not like, hey.
No, okay, no, this is, this is personal property.
Okay, yeah, well, okay. I'm good, thank you then. So did we finish twenty-one?
I think on twenty-one, we decided to remove the first sentence. And just leave it to property and operations shall be available for inspections by the authorized township inspectors. Which in our cases is staff.
Yeah, okay. And then just number twenty-four, I have to, I just, if I didn't understand. So if there is non-compliance and a receiver in notification about it. And it's not remedied. Actually subject to amended conditional needs from a review. Is that the same thing? That's different. Is she kind of, it's just.
It's, it's related, it's, it's outlining what would happen.
It's just saying, stating that if there are violations, that is the basis for the amendment, conditional use.
Basically saying if they don't, if they get a letter saying thirty days or seventy, whatever, to do this and they don't. At that time, then we have, if it says any violation, not remedied or.
Any violation, can you be very specific, like not remedied or addressed within the time period specified, please?
Well, it's, it says before that says, I shall promptly remedy within the time period specified by township. It's thirty days or, you know, if it's the middle of winter, they might not be able to do something, cuts them with all their.
I just don't wanna be here every month.
Should we talk about the best of you a little bit? That's kind of the one that hasn't been really addressed and, yeah. I'm still hung up on staff recommending approval of that in the originals.
There was no best of you at all in the original. Okay.
Not, not the, of the amended.
Okay, yeah, that just showed up in the amended CUP. The price.
Yep, that wasn't part of the original.
Addition.
Because what are we afraid of with the best of you?
Just, it's just fine.
We should be consistent.
Well, this is our first start, Lily. Yeah, so I mean, we really have nothing to say, well, we did it for this one. I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around the fact that planning or staff recommended it, because they were fine with it. What's our biggest concern other than something that's not even written in our zone? Well, if we can't be less restricted than the county, then how can they recommend? That's where I'm.
But it, yeah, I don't.
But what, what is everybody's concerns about the best of you other than that? Or you're afraid he's gonna live in it? Because what, what I would say is, so he's got a storage unit, correct? Where he's gonna have all the stuff for me in office, or, you know, that's where his microwave, refrigerator would be, bathrooms would be in there. That way you're not taking up your storage area for your personal items, you know, your your modern-day luxuries.
I think the only reason that they, what he first said, when he first came in May and June, because I started listening to him all over again. Was he's gonna access it twice a year, spring and fall, to kind of put it in and take it out. I think that might be, if I'm speaking for others, where their concern must have been in October, I wouldn't hear. So that must be, you know, because now it's just changed again, you know, what was different from when the original five months of discussion to October? I, I'm definitely.
It wasn't a miss on, you know, the original plans really sucks because it would have been really nice just to see the whole thing right away. That, that's, that's hard to wrap my head around too, but I do know accidents happen, that's why I'm trying to learn about that, ten thousand six hundred and sixty square feet. Because it, it is outlined in here that shall not be your residence, nobody shall live in there, in the amended CUP. That staff applied, that gave us in October. So I am just trying to see what everybody else is thinking about, you know, is that what we're afraid of?
I don't know, I would, I would guess that he probably intended to put that best of you on there when he ordered the lumber to build the building, if it were my guess. That clearly there.
That's clearly there.
I keep trying to guess what is happening.
I think that's where their, their concern.
The applicant's mind.
Well, I think there's.
I don't think we should, because it just, he was, was an application. I mean, I do, I have a question about setting precedent, you know, like, if, I don't know how many arclay.
This is it, because of the MINDAT rewrote, you know, when they redid it in MINDAT. And that actually put Minnesota Avenue in, constructed it four from a drone and created this arclay zone. That's why MINDAT put in the other driveway, because they determined that was gonna be the safest on the cul-de-sac. That's why MINDAT actually constructed all of the accesses along that. At that.
And how far down does it?
It goes all the way almost to the. It gets tricky down there because it's like county and all that, but you know, that whole Minnesota Avenue, there's a cutoff point, where the county takes it over and misses. But that's the only one in our, in our township. I don't know if there's others, if they've ever crossed over ten thousand square feet.
But it's so, this seems like a fairly small cross, you know, over ten thousand square feet, right? But if you allow that, then could somebody further south of that going to be like, well, we want twelve thousand square feet, they could, you know, like, is it, are we, if you like those degrees of.
What, seven buildings on his property, so yeah, the next. Well, there were only, what, seven buildings on his property? So, yeah, the next one will be twelve thousand and then what you said, and.
So that that's one of my main concerns is like.
Even if it gets written, there's only one after this is done. You know, this this would be grandpa again, obviously, but then we have it in writing. So we match.
But no, like we were supposed to in the first place.
But then why wouldn't we just do that? Oh, the county. I just might have a game.
I and I I appreciate that.
He's trying to just understand it.
Yeah, no, I know.
I'm just trying to see what everybody else is thinking as far as where we're headed, you know, towards the end here.
It's already there, right? It's.
The building's been built.
Yeah. If they say no, they have to tear it off.
The best of you.
I thought it was here.
The opening. The opening is there.
Opening.
It was boarded up.
And it actually constructed it.
But so, you know, everything. Was ordered prior to. Submitting the remaining CUP.
It's the outdoors.
So I don't think anybody's got any problems with it. I think it's just a a square footage.
A square footage.
And the fact that since April, we've been going on that the county only allows ten thousand in our Lily. And that's what we've been saying since April.
So this was resubmitted in April?
Yes.
My stomach's in the doors.
Oh, the north.
Shows you some example of it.
Well, it wasn't one of the other issues, so.
I think it is.
I guess I'm an Asian person.
Sure.
That's what I said. That's been after I started going through all of this.
Let's do some love earlier, at least. For me, let's.
But the turning movement, the way he's put it, or what I said earlier, why he's probably doing, he put it up to big fees from. Probably a lot of headlights out of the neighbors yards. Really.
I don't think we have a choice. I guess the building that shifted, the driveway got put in a wrong place. I don't care much about that.
Yeah. It's like blossom. In the front side, when they did.
Yeah.
When they shifted.
What's your?
Do you look at me and I have any?
Oh, I I just was looking around.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody's still. Still thinking.
Yeah.
You know, if you're reading an erosion plan, um. Do we, you know, upon completion, do we get any confirmation by an engineer that the grading plan is followed? I mean, do we? Do we do that? We typically, because I.
I don't know.
Reading plans.
Processes for. I don't know.
County approved this, right?
Usually it's after. Because I know it's kind of. Because the building shifted, we're doing all this, I know the grading.
Should be the same thing.
Right.
It's grading.
Yeah, so then does somebody approve that it was knowledge?
That's probably pretty great.
So when they, when GQ did their original stuff back in May.
Mm hmm.
Said, here we go, and applied for all the permits. I would assume that when the building shifted and moved. Then they apply for their while and septic and all of that happens again. So that that it complies with their new.
Well, well, maybe not, because.
And that was where they were going to put it the first place. Yeah, I mean, it all depends.
Any any application needed to be renewed.
Right.
I just thought the septic moved. I. It was identified.
True.
Purple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But and and they they're showing it. Once.
So can all of the um. Permits for the subject well. All that's been approved?
I didn't look at the website, but you can see it up there.
So the law was approved. The subject design was provided, but they have not applied for the subject permits. There was um. There was a coming permit for those who had drawn before the last meeting. And they did submit and agree with the base top. We could do the festival. So they would need.
Was that approved or is that part of what we're doing to that degree?
Yes, we don't approve that until it's. But we reviewed it with that. Um, and so they did do a subject design that would be up to. Our subject a lot to. It will be on the subject permit.
So if we pull the best of you up for the recent of grading plans.
And I'm looking at the. Originally approved in July. The reason I asked that was the number eight has no work on the property shall continue. And so all permits have been approved, including grading, conditionally accepted, and levels of the limits. Obviously, work has got ahead, but but they weren't necessarily sure that they were going to do something, is that? You've most recently reviewed.
Yeah, the um. Some of them came in after. After the CUP was approved.
So the subject design was going before the building permits were submitted before. So they had everything. The subject design was was in so that they could show that they could have a subject design. And we look at that to prepare if they need a whole maintainment, because a whole maintainment is wrong way now. As if you couldn't put a subject. Again, and the subject design was reviewed by our team. Okay, so they had their purpose.
You're talking a whole thing without a septic system to where it would just be a. Containment system and then gets pumped out.
Yeah.
Correct.
But that's, yeah, that's that's only if a septic.
Yep.
So just a semantics question. So Ali said they submitted them and they were reviewed. This condition says that they have to be approved. It was, they were approved, yes.
The building permit was actually approved. Um, on September sixth.
Okay.
And the well permit was issued on October third.
Okay, I just wanted, because I just wanted to make sure that was happening. In case we needed to carry this original condition. Over to this. Amendment. But it sounds like that's all in order. Other thoughts?
A lot of them.
What's that?
A lot of them.
Any motions? All right. One block, it's no more time.
It's been twenty. We got a couple hours yet.
For everybody in the room, let's just talk this through one more time. We're going to take out number four. They're going to take out the first two sentences.
You're talking it out.
On the draft, I'll turn it.
On the conditions.
Wait, I thought we were reading applicant shall construct one. This driveway, period.
No, but it says that we're gonna wrap it all.
And then cross out the without real rear.
We were out the first two sentences.
Yeah, we're getting tired.
Okay.
So number four would read have would start with applicant shall at all times comply. Applicant shall leave on property within that driveway. Now the driveway shall be allowed. So.
And we don't need to specify that we are only wanting one driveway because that's all that's allowed anyway.
That's right. Yeah, that's in the first Lily. I don't know if I said both here, you know, go have a come in, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going. This is only.
Making sure we're not excess. Having a door where multiple driveways can be.
Just remember that anywhere in these findings where it says cold stirring, where coal is going to be removed.
Yeah.
It says in number one, it says in number two.
It says it a lot, yeah. All right, number six will go away. Number seven will go away. All of number fourteen will go away. Twenty one. First sentence goes away.
Why does fourteen go away? I don't know why it's in here.
So there's two number.
No, four fourteen.
There's a fourteen is actually on the page after.
Well, if you're looking, that's a copy of the township attorney's.
Yeah, then he sent it in the newsplace.
Yeah, so next word. Yes, I got four or eight.
I just noticed.
Yeah, now it's the it's the second sentence.
The second.
Second word.
I noticed the.
I didn't.
They got two twelves, two thirteens, two fourteens.
We need to renumber this.
They need to.
In the in the in the final version of my finale, I'll pick a.
Renumber.
Hit my limit because I didn't catch that one. And that's what I had.
So we've decided everything except for the ten thousand. Square feet. That's accounting level, right?
But they say it's not in our ordinance.
And our ordinance supersedes the company, even though we don't have anything.
The county's supersedes that. I mean, it's a, if you want to resolve it. Right? That would wrap that's. In order for them to get the best of you.
Resolve to what? Best rule law?
Take it out of the air.
A two.
Yeah.
Which are both intended to.
Yeah.
Let's get her in the whole arc Lily corridor if you're there.
Well, we said change this to A two in April at first because it didn't meet the.
Didn't meet the definition.
And it was horrible. Couldn't even figure out which usually when we want those. My first one.
So you're still.
Let's story.
There there wasn't one that actually fit this application. Who would probably then the better out to know. You know.
I just don't see a. A real big issue with. The best of you all. I understand what they're thinking, but it. It was if I were building it, I would want. But. I don't know how everybody else thinks about that.
Yeah, so it should have been.
Perhaps.
But to make it legal, we got to resume.
No. No.
No. So are we setting a precedence that, like you said, somebody wants down the road twelve thousand square feet?
But it's case by case face still true, I mean.
It won't be because we're going to put that section D, we can all.
Yeah, whereas then it is. Written in the zoning laws.
Right.
So it's either you're going to follow the arc Lily and stop at the nine thousand eight hundred eighty feet because that was what it was originally submitted. Or. You decide right now that you're going to make an exception to it.
But.
And not follow the county. Rule. So you cannot follow the county's rule. Down road, correct?
Yeah.
Like the county has no.
It's not in, I mean, I think we are interpreting that as not applicable because it's a diff, it's. It is not a term that would be verbatim with some of the other changes. So. Couple of things. One, I believe this is the only arc Lily parcel in the township, so that will probably not happen. But assuming that and then kind of looking at your zoning, you know, that's another conversation that. We want to have. I think there's an opportunity for us to kind of take a look at this as follows the fragile eyes and say, what can we do to? You know, what are the intentions of some of these things and how can I look as we? Move forward.
And I get that part. So but right now, we always fall back on with the county. So do we wait? And say, you can put the vest of you on after it's zoned properly or?
So we are the staff report, the staff opinion is that is not applicable to this. Application. Because it is the Orinoco zoning ordinance and that's town zoning ordinance and that the. That is our interpretation of that for all of you. Is that the two are that because it's not in the. Township zoning ordinance, it is not applicable.
So if this, if they had brought like a twenty thousand square foot building. You would say that would be fine to according to your findings based on what you just.
You would not have a finding that would say because just of the size that that was not allowed. Not have, if there was some other purpose or some other thing.
Fair enough, but the size issue.
So on the other side of what I'm thinking, you know, by if we do deny it, the best of you all. The only real findings that we have to deny it because. They're saying that it can be over ten thousand square feet.
Whoever you are.
Well. The only findings that we have that are the complaints of just couple neighbors. That's the only findings that.
Not they weren't complaining about the best of you.
No. The. If we deny it, I'm just wondering, does that open us up to? Future litigation on it. Because we denied it because we wanted to.
Well, we went to.
But.
I mean, really, our reason was we were trying to hold them to the ten thousand like the county.
Yeah. The county is.
Right, after we've been doing this since April.
They don't.
I know, so.
But it's not matter the judge. They'll say our interpretation could be as big as it could possibly because there's nothing in our order.
It's gotta pass it. We gotta let it do whatever.
I'm trying to avoid that.
Right. Yeah, I know. We got something.
Well. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Then you would strike one from.
Yep, so we'll strike one.
Well, applicants shall comply with the approved site planning.
I did really say though. Can we put, so we can't put any of the outside, like. We can have an amended CP next month because it's been added on another five thousand feet. I I mean, like. Is that, is that a possibility, like?
Absolutely.
It's a possibility, right? But yeah, so do we need to amend our ordinance like immediately?
We haven't had time to do anything.
I know we haven't had time to, but you see what I'm saying, like.
I don't, can I just say straight there and? Both of us will.
It's annoying.
So then it'd be strike one, then basically you just use staff recommendations.
Oh, yeah. So it'll be strike one. Yeah, that's what we were just.
Yeah.
Even, yeah.
You go with the first one from.
Doc told us staff recommendations.
Yes.
Eight thousand six hundred eighty square feet. For. The site plan provider I G P.
Yes.
He's wanted for.
So that would at least prevent. Your concern of coming back and go, oh, by the way, we ordered worms.
It does. Sorry.
It's on, it's on paper once it happens or.
So then if you go to. The October. Uh, January, October. Staff findings, recommendations, then we got to talk about.
Well, why the?
Well, so we we struck.
There are findings and still.
Yeah, there's.
Lots of conditions because we just went.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which are basically the same as staff, correct?
They're they're beefed up from the last time.
Other than a couple of minor tweaks.
Right, because we added like six and seven and we're.
We can help anyway.
Yep.
So we're going to use his draft alternative condition. Taking out what we just talked about, that's your taking out. Taking out what we just talked about, yes, you're taking out. Only one.
So we just trash the best of you?
No, you.
April, now we know the best.
You'd have to take out the not exceeding.
But, yeah, so, yeah, then, but we need, we need the staff recommendations of the not exceeding the ten thousand six hundred and eighty square feet.
Right. You change the not exceeding ninety eight feet square feet to ten thousand.
Ten thousand six hundred and eighty.
So again, not exceeding ten thousand six hundred.
Yeah. The only thing that I saw in staff recommendations was this twenty three when we struck out. With the same.
By number one, you would have to remove the third sentence application, so you submit a site plan without the hundred square foot. You have to take that.
Yeah, so I'm looking at staff recommendation versus Bob's right now. The only thing that I'm, that's jumping out of me right now is twenty three and twenty, so twenty three and staff. And twenty one. We struck out the first sentence on Bob's, which is Bob's twenty one. And staff's twenty three.
Anything applying to him on that? Or?
Well, maybe you should ask the township.
I think that's in, in staff's two, correct?
Those were from the previous. Those weren't the previous.
So I, I'm talking staff's October. Um.
Right.
Recommendations.
Right, because Bob had those and. We got too many copies.
Yeah.
Files of the mission.
So you got the right. It was twenty three originally. A staff condition or?
Um. Was from the attorneys. That, that said, this is the chance to be by the attorney, so that is why they're much longer than my original recommendations. Do you see different language? Um, as to how. So.
I was just trying to simplify things instead of having.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
No. We're taking this from Bob, we're taking this from staff. The staff hasn't laid out its two blocks, basically approved it.
Right.
When she gave her presentation, said that she recommended we square off of.
October, October.
The, the. Draft from her lawyer.
If you're kind of, if you're getting to the point now where you're thinking that, you know, at the very beginning of the conversation, we kind of said there were two different routes you could go. And the first route was kind of to accept. You know, the staff report from October, which was kind of essentially was approval with a lot of conditions.
Yes.
And the second one was to kind of say, if you wanted to specifically address, I think, the rest of the poor areas. I think you've now gotten to the point where you're probably okay with all four of those. So if that's the case. You probably could go back to the October conditions.
Yeah.
And approve those. And then that would already be, uh, something that would be available for us to.
Make sure everything. Uh, you say, I'll go back and look at the October ones because I want to make sure that everything we talked about tonight is covered.
Those are on, um, is that at page thirty? Thank you. Yeah.
Of this month's.
Yeah, we. Yep. It's this. Somebody's got it.
She'll find them twice. They're on page thirty.
Staff lines through someone else.
It's thirty is. Thirty is.
No, straight out.
So five is when he leaving ones.
Right. That made a shell, but the other thing it doesn't say, now we have to add that back in is. It doesn't say that he's required to get a new driveway. So that needs to be added back in.
Old number five on page five thirty. Advocate may instruct one to two this driveway and the location shown on the T and M.
Right, and I don't see.
Not necessarily.
I don't see a condition that says.
Doesn't that?
That it requires you to. Yeah, so. Which is like Bob's condition number five, says he's to apply for it and receive a new approved driveway permit. That's not in the. In the findings from the last week, so I would have to be in the. Finally knew where we're at.
So are you?
Madam Chair, another point I'd like, so we're trying to help, we're trying to talk back here too, to try to say, okay, how do we move forward? Uh, as well, I think what we wondered is. We could use the attorney's draft alternative conditions because I think we've gone through those at pretty. You know, we've gone through all of those and what I would. Potentially recommend is if you gave us a few minutes, so maybe if we took a fifteen minute break or something, we could do a quick amended type up of those. And then come back and kind of walk through them all one last time collectively, so we would all be on the same page.
Agreeable, everybody?
Doing evolution.
Yeah. I'm going to take a fifteen minute time. Is fifteen enough?
I think so.
Good.
It may not even take that long. I think it's already been.
Some other agenda items.
Actually, or you could, if you wanted to, you could move on and.
Yeah. The putting your thumbs for fifteen minutes.
I wouldn't mind that.
About fifteen minutes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know.
I just.
Yeah, and then it would just make these. We didn't know what, and then I'd just do like a chance.
So how long do we got for that, the thing you brought up? That current one?
How much time do we want?
Sarah? Ma'am, is that still recording? Yes. So we work on another agenda item and still.
And we'll pick up there.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, wait for Angela to get back and Cindy to get back, but, uh, yeah, so Virgil came and saw me after the meeting.
So, so again, so Sarah, no, tell, we don't know anything about anything. This goes back to the underzat variance that was at the Orinoco Township Board meeting that never came to unpack because variances don't. And so this is where the underzats had, uh, just purchased a big property and.
Wanted to go sell the website, yeah, but.
Martin Larsen P lot, that should.
People have purchased it and they just wanted to purchase four point six two acres as a residential building lot. And it seems like if you.
You know what the horse barn is?
The question.
Oh, keep back. I know where I'm.
Um, I think if you go to the last page. That's the biggest area where you can actually see the horse barn on there.
Yes, so right here is the first barn.
Yep.
Your quarter.
And so you go down to the next gravel.
Yeah. You can actually see the property. Um.
Just.
That's Laura and Bill Underzat property.
Page, there's actually a line where the variance was taken out. So.
Oh, there's the horse barn. There's under.
Right.
I see it.
Yeah, okay, so go back one page. So right here, they've very, they got variance for this four point six acres.
Why do we talk about that? Right, we're talking about the. Situation. It's a, they're in the, the town board.
The variance exists. Four point.
The one's incredible. Um, because the variance.
Which is not what's in red here.
That's a feedlot.
Oh, I.
That's where I'm.
That's where the issue.
If you go into the.
But this was presented to us of the town.
I want to each pointed out, then I want everybody to hear.
Well, this is the four point six acres that they got a variance for. Because it's less than five acre parcel, so you have to have five and a thirty five to be a true non-farm dwelling. So they had to do a variance for the four point six. To get that a buildable site.
Is that square? She just pointed out, is that so wild?
Yep, that's the four point six.
It's not average. Where is this at?
They, I thought they furnished.
They did.
Purchased a large acre, but they're purchasing a four point six two acres, so.
Built a lot.
Five thirty five?
No.
They don't have to.
Because the variance was for a less than five acre parcel.
So.
You have a built site.
Well, yes.
So we're.
So it's not a five acre sign, so they're.
Well, but they got the variance to build a, a four point six, which I'm fine with. There's no issue with that. So now if you go to the last page. So the red outlined area is the feedlot. The blue line is your quarter mile setback. So we, not we, to town board, part of this variance was to allow a non-farm dwelling. Be built within a quarter mile of a feedlot, of a, of an actual registered feedlot. Martin and I have had long conversations about this. So there are phantom feedlots in our township too, which they, they look back five years. They haven't had any livestock for the last five years, so then they become an inactive feedlot. This is an active feedlot. So Virgil Chilton owns the property of the feedlot. And he is rather obsessed. About. This non-farm dwelling being allowed to be built within this quarter mile.
And where exactly in this circle is that house going to be?
House is going to be up here, where under is that?
Uh, yeah.
These are. So this, I'm assuming is.
But it has to be in that blue.
But so on this one, it was just a little dot. So Martin took and actually drew the feedlot, the red line in there.
So.
That makes the feedlot.
This is where.
So this is the actual feedlot.
They're going to.
Which to this quarter mile takes that whole parcel.
But Adam, they're not within sports. They're not really going to build, they're not building in that circle. So why is that a problem? So the actual building is going to be right here.
This is underzats.
Underzat would be.
This is underzats.
So the, the four point six is right here.
But I thought this is, wait, this is underzats here.
Yep.
So there's, there's their two pole barn.
Yep.
The new house is going to use this driveway and they've got the four point six two acres like right here.
Like they're not in the circle.
Because they're going to use this same driveway and I'm right here.
That's kind of what thing is what's.
So this is the, that you're going to use that same driveway. To build. They, they think they're going to build up in here along the woods.
So this is all parcels off right here. So this is the chunk they're trying to sell. This is the four point six.
Oh, so they're going to use this driveway and.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's this, so this is Frank Lee's properties. So they're, the one piece of part block squares off of this.
Okay.
It comes straight here. If you look back one page.
So I think what you're saying is here's the quarter mile boundary of the feedlot.
Yeah.
And they're. Approaching on part.
Well.
Encroaching on curtain.
But when Martin actually drew the feedlot out, which he didn't hear, so he drew out the feedlot of where the livestock are fed, the buildings. Then all of a sudden, your quarter miles is way out here. Which is touching the spring lease property. So.
So I wonder where this line was at the center of the feedlot and he's going from the.
Yeah, so this is like what our maps are, so it's just a dot. Roughly where.
I see.
Where the feedlot.
So you go from the actual boundaries.
Boundaries, so you have to go from your corners. You know, so if you have a building, say you've got eight buildings, the closest building to the next neighboring property is where you.
And why is he upset?
Because he doesn't want a non-farm dwelling house built within a quarter mile.
That's going to complain about this amount.
That's what he's concerned. And so how we addressed at the town board meeting was if you get a complaint from those people. They knowingly built the house within a quarter mile of the feedlot. And if they have these problems with it, they're township board chair. And we're going to help them.
Well, we have it in zoning.
We have it in the zoning.
Yeah.
What? Then you can't.
So. Yep, we can't build a feedlot within a quarter mile of houses.
Would the county do this to the measure? Or?
I, well, I think, I think it was this. I, you know. Because they just had a donation.
They stayed just a dot.
Take this.
We, I don't.
Right.
So then what, what would you do if you're Mr. Chilton? Or, I mean, what could we do? I mean, well, it's just a probably. We did it based on staff.
I can.
That.
Well, and, and I get really. Kind of protectable feedlots.
Right, I get that.
So, but.
And that's why I know the residential protectively there are.
Yeah. You know, um.
That.
We, if we allow this one.
We're sending it back again.
But, yeah.
But that's that.
Information we received.
So if the staff findings say, I don't know what. This is the information we get at the town board. This is like.
This was, that's going right back into what we just talked.
So like this is, in my, this, Martin just gave us things, Martin and Angela White and I, because we look Virgil today. And then Frank Lee's.
They're really.
I can see her today. So it's something that, you know, we have that quarter mile step back in our.
But this is really good information because now I understand because this whole quarter mile. Was drawn like it was barely.
Right here, here, you go to build your house outside of the quarter mile.
Yeah, and that's what the plan there is.
And now I see. Right.
Now I get, now I get.
That might needs to ring.
So, so a variance is a, yeah, so no. A variance.
Oh.
They're.
And they're wrong.
Six two acres.
According to the.
I don't know.
No, you know, Virgil brought up at the town board meeting that that's a state law. That's just not a county ordinance. It's a state law that you cannot build.
Mm-hmm.
Within a quarter mile. That's just not something we do here in the state county or Orinoco Township. He said that is state mandated.
Is that correct?
Which I didn't know.
Oh, it might be, but.
Which is a state.
We have to.
It's located in your ordinance, you still have the ability to.
Yeah, we'd have to verify, but that was.
I didn't know. So in fact, within the day that I was bringing up, I said, I don't know the next step.
So recourse, yeah.
I don't know.
That would like you.
So.
That would be the.
The recourse at this point would be filing a suit in district court. Because the, the.
To not why the.
The appeal process, the time to appeal the variance has expired, so then you'd have to go to that.
No, that's, I think Virgil is, you know. Ready to do that.
Well, it's a good lesson learned from this too, I guess, that next time I get them out and, I mean, staff meetings, I have to go, okay.
Well.
I have to personally learn this stuff.
Well, you know.
If I'm like that, that.
Like.
Well, this chunk.
I'm talking with Brian Call today too. So Brian and I are the two largest feedlots. I said, okay, if this goes through, I said, are they going to say, well, we can, you know, somebody wants.
I'm going to move my house down to camp right outside yours.
I'm sure the fans are all going right towards you.
As long as I don't get a.
You're getting started if you get stuck. Yeah.
So. Well. I think, I think it may be questioned, Bob, and say, so how do we?
Yeah.
And it sounds like probably he's going to have to.
And so then that's what I told Virgil today. I said, it's already approved. I said, I don't know what happened to that business, but I said, I, you know, he was very thankful that we came out. And met with him today because.
Well, and that map he included, he was. Is very beneficial.
Yeah.
You can't necessarily go from the center of the feedlot.
Well.
From the boundary.
Yeah, and it's always supposed to be the closest building to the property, either to the, to the adjacent property. He mapped that, I'll say. And so the first several pages are just pictures of his aerial site over the last, what, five years?
Did he not get notified that this was?
So the.
Me too.
He, he was notified, but the way they explained, he got a letter instead of a postcard and he didn't read the letter. He said that they're always used to the postcard.
He didn't turn it over.
He didn't turn it over to look at the.
Okay, so I'm I'm like, well.
So he got the note. So that's part of the challenge, that people receive the notification they need to.
And he did, he did verify that he did get the notifications. I'm like, if you would have went to that meeting and voiced your opinions that night. You know, cause he knew measurements, the first time I talked to him, he knew exactly how far it was from his property to the next property and his property to. The township.
It would have made a difference because she, as soon as you pointed it out, she picked up.
Yep.
And I'm throwing together four members, whatever it's about.
Yeah.
So our notice is coming as letters now or it was, or does it depend?
Um, it's a notice on the front and then a map on the back.
Okay. As a postcard?
No, I guess it's not a postal card. It's like a.
So so. He looked at it and so there were three feedlots in that area. Okay, let's let her.
Okay, so guys are.
And I would recommend, so what we have here is Ally has on the board been able to kind of put down what we think was agreed to. And so I don't know, Ally, if you wanna just kind of go see, like, number one, is there any question to? Go one by one quickly.
So you can see where we replaced all cold for personal.
Yep.
You can see the ten thousand six hundred eighty square feet. You can also see where you mentioned that you wanted to strike something. Um, maybe I'll track in it. So this is number one. Um, did that ten thousand number need to be, oh, I'm not exceeding ten thousand six hundred years or. Yeah, of course. Um. Okay, so then strike through that one sentence. Number two had cold, so we removed it. Strike number four, the first two sentences. Then a period after applicant shall at all times comply with the approved site plan and grading plan. And we removed, which is incorporated herein by reference. Um, applicant shall instead of may. Striking six and seven. Uh, number ten, replacing cold with personal. Number thirteen, again, replacement.
Put in some spots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, I'm just following along with your notes.
So I have now renumbered them.
We don't have to do fourteen two.
Fourteen, hey, fourteen. Okay, so one.
Remind someone on sixteen though.
So, so I just, um. There shall be no outdoor storage as its own, so I just.
That's the first, number fourteen.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Right here.
Yeah.
All right. All right, okay, it it should, it's just right next to each other. I can fix that later. Fourteen, no explosives, fifteen, no outdoor sales. Sixteen is the old.
Uh, signage, sorry.
Signage, seventeen is the new, old, is the new fourteen. Um, and we wanted to. And then. And those.
That's two.
Noise vibrations. And previous surface coverage, twenty twenty-one, replacing cold with personal. Twenty-four, replacing the first sentence, leaving the remainder remaining. The property operation shall be available for inspection by authorized township inspector within normal business hours. And then twenty-five and twenty-six, you know, change that.
Well, now you're doing that. I think I followed along and managed my.
How we have something in motions?
This is the alternative draft conditions, the updated alternative draft conditions.
Yep.
Correct? I I'm just saying updated.
It's now updated.
Updated.
Yeah.
Okay, now that we know what we changed.
Any discussion?
Any other discussion? Any changes, comments, motions?
I make motion that we free. So just.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use amendment or twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one CUP by T and M. Based on staff findings with updated draft alternative findings.
Condition.
Condition.
Okay. Everybody know where we're at? Understand what the motion is? Okay, and a motion by Mr. Rucker and a second by Mr. Ober to approve CUP um, based on staff findings instead of updated conditions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There votes aye, motion cheers. Thank you, everybody. Anyone spend a lot of work?
Do you have a Christmas airport? We never went off.
Do we have, do we have anything on our agenda for nice fun yet?
We did work on it.
And maybe make.
Okay, so, um. All right, so we just have a, um. Um, I had Sarah had his own ordinance such a. As a discussion I was. Um, we had previously talked a little bit about this, and if you look at the back of your. Um, I had heard include, I believe the first copy was our zoning ordinance and the second, this is article three, based on your guys' feedback, you know, that actually had my meetings. And based on the feedback I got, we looked to you on article three was a pretty common place that everybody wanted to stop.
Oh.
And so I asked Sarah to include the current version from our zoning of ordinance, which I believe is the first.
Whichever has the blue kind of headings, that is Olmsted County's.
Olmsted County.
Yep, and then the other one is in all black is is the township.
So that way you have a side by side comparison. Um, and see what's made, and maybe they're, I I don't think they're exactly identical. Well, fire call when I, when I glance through it. But that's, that's what I'd like to do, that's me.
Yep.
Okay, is to do a side by side comparison, see what's in the county that maybe we need to add or vice versa. Um, let me move on and change.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to, so that's kind of your whole one. Um, so the other thing I wanted to mention is, um. Um, Tammy and I had had a meeting, a meet and greet with Allison Sosa. And, um, and we discussed, um, doing an education session. Now, Adam, I don't know if people are sure, but I, I don't remember. A number, quite a few years ago, we had kind of a land use plan in one-on-one. Our planning department, the city vastly went through.
I remember that meeting was available.
Yeah. And, um, but that was a while, while ago.
Yep.
And most of you guys are new since then. And the town board is all new since then. And so Allison brought up about having an education session um, to just kind of discuss some of the things that happened. I meant to thank the applicant because we got education. You know, baptism by fire with this application and we learned a lot. Learned mistakes that were made on both sides. And I think it gave us a better clarity at things we need to look at. Conditions we may or may not need to write for future CUPs by quarter. Now we have the moratorium, so we have eleven months left to.
There was still eleven, I figured about the eight.
Um, well, and I think there was gonna be an updated.
Yeah, there was.
I think Bob was gonna work, was he gonna work with you, David? On a updated moratorium, I don't. Um.
Well, I'll follow up with him.
Yeah. And and then if the September meeting, Bob called in for.
Yep.
Yeah.
And he also talked about an education section, session. Um, and so I talked to him as well, and so what I'd like to do is work with, with Bob and planning and schedule something that works and and Bob will come down for that, I think. Um. Now, we may have to to work with everybody's schedules, manage, call a special meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I was just looking, I won't be here on the twenty-second of January.
Okay. Um, because, and the reason I say that is Bob has a, a city council meeting on first and third Monday. And so the, our normal meeting time is when we talk. Um, you said the twenty-second.
Yeah. Cause Martin, June day is the week before.
Oh.
That's our fourth one day.
Yeah.
Meeting.
Um, so anyway, um, that's what I'd like to get done after the first, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to add something, huh? Okay, everybody, um, so, yeah, part of the conversation, you know, that we had, so I'm coming from the city of Rochester where they're planning some zoning commission or city council, um, and there's only Board of Appeals. And we would do an annual training that, and we would do it with the city attorney at the time, and it was really, um, like. I don't say one-on-one, but what do you want to hear? Like, right? What, what do you, what do you want to know? What questions do you have as commissioner? So, um, I would really value any questions that you have, if you wanted to send them my way. We could really craft the training to whatever questions, you know, whatever questions you have. And the other thing that we did, um, that was kind of fun was sometimes your staff reports are kind of long, sometimes the your jobs are kind of long. So how do you summarize those, right? What's the important stuff to read, um, that kind of stuff? So, um, but I thought.
Right, it's all important.
It's all important, but there's different pieces in your staff reports, right? And what's the important piece for the, you know, for, for the commissioners, right? This comes down to the criteria, the findings and and the conditions. That, that's what you want to know. That's how you determine what's relevant and what's and what's not relevant.
That was tonight because we did not need to sit and listen to all the lead up to the finding the conditions. We've heard it multiple times. So I was glad that you didn't go through all of that again.
Well, thank you. And I don't put together most, most of, most of that, uh, report, but we just, we saw a lot of, um, a lot of value that came out of that at the, at the city. And it was an annual training at the beginning of the year and, you know, what, what do you want from us? How do we support you as commissioner? So I can see the same value, you know, happening with with this, this commission.
And Allison, one thing I'd add is I think we learned lessons in our processes too, so we'll be working on that through this process.
Yeah.
So that'll be something I'm more into. We, we learned where we can do better and that where we have to, like, yeah.
And, and, um. I think, I guess speaking for myself, but I guess you, most of you as well. What this whole application was frustrating because things were done prior to getting approval. It wasn't necessarily what he did, it was the fact that he did it without approval.
Yep.
And so that was kind of the enforcement thing that we had talked about a little bit earlier. So that's a question or something that I would like to see covered in an education session is what? What do you guys do and what is, what is? And then Bob can follow it up with what he does as far as that whole process, that kind of stuff, so. Um, so anyway, but I thought, you know, with the holidays and all of that, everybody's schedules are busy. Try to squeeze in a special meeting is not gonna work. And I so, what I told Bob is that's like a January, February, so. But because we're working on updating our land use plan and their zoning ordinance, I think it's pretty relevant that we do it sooner rather than.
Yep.
So that, that's my thought on that. Um. And I think it's okay, you guys can tell me otherwise, but if we work on, say, article three. And we want to make some changes or we set, you know, he's got this, we need to make sure it's in ours, whatever. I think we can take that, once we get it finalized, and go ahead and send it to the town board for approval. And then we can move on to the next one. We don't necessarily have to do the whole document. Um, like this whole section D thing, we could take that and say, look, county has this section. We want to take those, put them in ours and send it to the board to approve it.
Yep.
And then for the next time something comes up.
It's there.
It's the right, right. So it's, it's those kinds of things. Um, because we've been trying to do the land use planning for, you know, since COVID. And and I kind of changed how I'm thinking about it, rather than, um, trying to do the whole document, let's take a section and as we do that, get it approved.
Yeah.
Now, it's gonna, it's, it's not as overwhelming for us. And it, it will be easier, I think, for the town board. We can take this piece, show them what we're proposing to change versus giving them this giant document.
Right.
So that's kind of the way I decided to approach it.
I love that idea. I just, the only question I have about it is like, how do we get citizen feedback if we're doing it piece by piece? So, well, talk to the county about the citizen feedback. Yes. With Rochester Township, and I can't remember the other township, what they said is we didn't really solicit resident feedback, but what we did was when we finished the land use plan, we had an open house. And we allowed the residents to come in, ask us questions. We kind of talked to them a little bit about what was changed, what was updated. You know, Rochester Township said, we're pretty much like you, we, we duplicate everything the county does with a couple weird little nuances, but they said we didn't really solicit feedback because it just gets crazy. Then he said what we did was open houses for that, um, that public education piece. Rochester Township and. I think it was Cascade and Rochester both did that.
So, cause otherwise we do what? We have a public hearing here or just at the town board?
I'm sorry, I missed your question. So at the Rochester Township and Cascade Township, when they were done reviewing their land use plan, instead of, you know, offering like resident feedback on what you think the land use plan should look like. The township's both went ahead and they made their land use plan changes. And then they offered an opportunity for like education, so they did open houses. And that way they felt like they were giving the residents an opportunity to learn about what the land use plan is. And they could, you know, it was more like not asking for feedback, more like educating. And so the question was how, how do we do that? Do we have to have a public hearing? Um, you know, I think Rochester and Cascade Township just literally had like an open house, a couple hours. Whoever could make it made it.
And that's your land use plan, not, not your zoning, but your, but your land use.
Landy, the land use plan. You know, Rochester did something kind of interesting with parks and transportation. I'm just wondering, like, okay, maybe it's not like, here's the document review, but maybe ahead of all of that, it's like way in, like, you know, they have like these online things where people can put their ideas. I just kind of want a sense of like, do people want more development? Do people want farmland preservation? Like, what, what do people?
Well, I could say what people might do.
I think I know openly, if they want ag preservation that we want, and they. Residential development.
And, and I understand why Rochester and Cascade do that. If you ask for feedback every time, you can't. You're gonna have, if you have a thousand people. And you're gonna have nine hundred ninety-nine people that aren't happy because theirs didn't.
It seemed to be that, but like ideas, like.
It seemed to be that, but like ideas, like, you know, like portable housing is important to us. Or, you know, they might just identify things that we.
Yeah, I think that kind of.
Cause are we representative of that, like, of everyone here? Like, maybe we are, I don't know. I mean, that's actually a.
The conversation actually came on at a graduation party. And they asked me how in the world we allow these two developments on Eighteenth Avenue? And you're taking all our ag land away and all these things. And once I explained to them that, you know, we're trying to be very thoughtful in our township about the residential corridor along Eighteenth Avenue. We're trying to heat the residential area here. And then if you don't know, by the way, this will probably be the next in the city of Rochester in the next twenty years. And then I said, we're really thoughtfully looking at how do we save the ag land we have, you know? But at the same time, if you have a farmer that has nobody to take over his farm, and he has an opportunity to sell it for seven times more than it's worth, how do you tell him he can't do that, right? So it's, once you start, I, I like the idea of having some of it, because once we started that dialogue, everybody in that room went, oh. You know, because I walked in the room with neighbors, just kind of like, oh, did you allow this and blah, blah, blah? Let's explain to them our approach and our thought behind some of the decisions we're making now. You know, that's why I do think it's important to have those open houses and things, listen to some ideas.
I think, yeah.
One thing, we did update, the countywide land use plan was updated and approved last year. So I think one thing we could do is kind of start with looking at what that kind of updated land use plan says, kind of having that conversation. And then looking at the zoning ordinance, which has not been updated. I think there's a couple of questions that we're kicking tires on frankly here right now, as far as I think even starting to have conversations like, is it time for us to revisit the zoning code? You know, just in general, which would be, you know, maybe instead of having at the county level and then maybe having, you know, we talk about that, maybe instead of having a separate one, maybe we can adapt the needs of Orinoco Township into the county one. Now, these are long conversations. Now, they will take time. I think these are just things that as we're starting to visit with different townships and small cities and just kind of doing meet and greets and stuff, things we're starting to hear percolate. So these are kind of things that are popping up potentially for us too. I think it'll be some good conversations to try to figure out kind of what does all of this mean? And how can we get it where the pieces are kind of, I'd say, rowing in the same direction? But I guess that, well, that'd probably be the analogy, yeah, kind of moving in this, in the same way. And I think we extraordinarily interested in being a part of that, you know, whatever that might look like.
Absolutely. So, and I, I think your, my idea that you were talking about with open houses is okay for, and, and maybe you've been saying for the land use.
Yeah, I was just.
The zoning ordinance, I think we need to, you know, based on applications we've had over the past five years, you know, each one is whether it's a fuzzy development there or a questioning center there or a house, spouse thing on the way, whatever. I mean, we've had enough issues that we need to get something in place pretty quick. And so that's, I think, in our zoning measures, we need to look at a few of those things.
Well, and somebody wants to approach me about a main house development too. Main house development. It's already in existence, but she wants to add to it.
Again.
So you know what I'm.
Maybe.
We don't have any of them.
No, I mean, we don't have any really because, you know, and we, because when we look at a residential lot, we're looking at two acres in size in county. So, I mean, I think without, without having that, it gets, it's not impossible, but it's complicated. So.
That's like their, their enforcement, that's the problem. There is no, it exists today. It's there. And she's already doing it.
Yep.
She has reimbursement. Where, where's enforcement?
Did anyone complain?
I don't know if there's been a complaint. I mean, I, I don't.
Always when Charlie Lacy was still on the floor.
Yeah.
It's been a while ago.
Yeah.
No. Well, maybe I should, remember that list you guys had me drop, looking back at all of the minutes from every week? Like, maybe we can have that alongside what we're doing too, so we don't forget, like, that we had. Yeah, interest or, or curious about certain things, so.
Um, can you, man, I think I still have them somewhere. Can you send them to Sarah, so she can forward them?
Yeah. I checked out one folder, all my planning stuff goes into.
That's a separate stack. This was just for, this is not.
Yeah, that I just have a file this quick at home.
Um, so that's kind of, um, kind of what I wanted to talk about as far as the L U P and zoning ordinance. Um, but like I said, based on everybody's feedback in September.
Yep.
Um, and I think Article Three is where we'll start. And I think it stemmed because we don't understand exactly what process is when there's complaints. Or, um, things like that. So. Um.
So I hope we're gonna do in December. Are we good? I hope we're for that to do in December at our December meeting for our U N C E J A N E group.
And we're on that team.
Try to get at this.
You, you guys tell me, are you okay with having a December meeting?
Be the eighteen, the week before December.
I'm okay with it.
I'm fine with it.
Totally, I'm fine.
So, yeah. The December meeting will start following for Article Three. Um, and then like I said, in the meantime, I'll work with Allison and, and Bob and we'll get some kind of education then. But for, um, one, maybe in February, they'll give them both time to get their stuff together.
Sounds great.
Vote easy on us.
What's that?
You vote easy on us in December.
That's all.
Yeah. Shouldn't we keep this here till eleven?
No.
I can do this again tomorrow night, because I have the old state townie council.
I'm. Let me go back to this. What's that?
Oh, so I was just saying.
So there, there are three other variants that are township that I found that allowed a feedlot or a house to be built within a quarter mile of a feedlot. Two of them are, uh, kids of the feedlot owner.
Yeah.
The other one's a sister.
Yeah.
And the other one's a what?
A sister.
Also, it's all family.
It's all family.
Well, they're not gonna complain about things.
Well, and, and that's what I, I did ask Martin or maybe it was Ally, I asked, she's the one that's providing all this lovely information. Um, so after I researched that, it was three relatives that those variants were allowed for.
Sister being Carol.
Yep.
Yeah.
The mother-in-law's. So.
Over in the same area? You didn't, you were voted against. Do you remember this one?
It was, it went to Benavirian's because those, that was the township.
Town board.
Very similar to the town board. Like this one came to the town or it did.
Do you remember that one?
I voted against them.
Because it was near a feedlot, but I didn't, was it within it?
Probably was within a quarter mile, because if it would have been, I would have. Done. Do it differently. Oh, but that is one thing I thought about with doing our land use plan and our zoning ordinance. Do we need, should we look into a half mile setback from a subdivision from the feedlot? Is that something we can get maps on? You know, draw a half book. Okay, not, not just any feedlot, half of feedlots.
So you could put a single dwelling in the quarter.
Not, not, you know, what's gonna end up happening over there.
Well, right, because they're already planning. And I told that to Virgil too. I said, I'm sorry, but Orinoco wants, Orinoco City, that township wants to go, you have to develop you all, all the way to New Haven.
Yeah. And I said, it's not just Virgil's, but I'm trying to protect all of our ample feedlots that are in, in the township.
Well, just because the city of Orinoco wants to do something doesn't mean that's what's gonna happen.
So.
It's like fifty years from now. Yeah, but that's. Like he's gonna end up with, owners that want to put in four houses on that twenty acres and the city's like, well, you know, eventually you'll be in the city and we don't want just four houses, we want maximum, we want high density.
Well, that's not their problem.
It's problem. And so there's not setting a twenty house next to a feedlot, so that's, that's.
Well, actually, well, I guess that's on our side. A feedlot can't be built within the half mile of, I mean, municipality is in our ordinance.
Yeah, but if, are they gonna do that? They can't really annex it in the city, then if the feedlot's existing.
The, that's not saying that the city can't build within a half mile of a feedlot. That's in, in the township, we can't. So, in the city, they might say, we don't have to follow those rules, we can do whatever we want.
And then those people will complain and complain that they live next to a farm.
Yep.
Even though the farm's got there for a hundred acres.
Well, that's, I'm just trying.
Even by mining.
I'm trying to protect the homeowner that buys the property.
Yeah.
As much as I am, but we don't need complaints on either side.
Right. So now, he has to go back. It's a done deal, so he has to go to court to.
Now he's gotta go to court.
Yep.
At his own expense.
But we're, and I, I want to go back to the staff findings. The staff findings told you that this was right? So do we need clarification on how to do measurements at the staff level?
I think that if you have a question, you know, I think there, if you have a specific question on it.
Yeah.
Kind of, you can ask. I don't want to get into, I don't know that we are ready to get into the what actually step by step happened. I mean, the staff report was done, the due diligence was done, you know, all of the, you know, I mean, we, we do referral comments, those were completed. There were no issues brought up and those referral comments were there.
So how?
And then we do a public hearing.
So how did she get educated on whether it was at the line to the half mile? How do you know? I mean, she's going, so they're getting guidance. How do you, what do you do at this point? Because we went down the wrong road, right? And when we gave the variant, so we did it wrong.
I would disagree with that.
Okay, so we.
I mean, I think that you, the town, the town board, the, yeah, the town board made findings of fact based on what was presented to them. And they may find that this was something that was applicable, so there was nothing wrong done.
It was, but they used the wrong measurement, isn't that my understanding? Is that what you said earlier?
Well, so they just use the, the math dot.
Okay.
To stop the conversation. So, here's one.
So it should be the outer line?
Yes.
That's my question, how do you not do it again? If we haven't finished, how do you, how do you know? So we don't do it again?
Cause in, in the feedlot technician was, you know, so the feedlot technician technician put that inside packets. Part of the market. And then we also had a. He's my age, uh, Jim Standard.
Martin. If they went from the exterior to this.
Well, I think that, we won't work with our feedlot technician on that because that's where we have that information. So that information comes to us as part of the referral comment.
Okay.
So we'll look into that, but I mean, as far as kind of, you know, how this was laid out and moved forward. I mean, the other part is we did make sure that notifications were sent, so people were notified, they had an opportunity to come to the public hearing. The staff report had all of the information that was pertinent in there, and so the town board had all the information they needed to make findings. And so it's not whether, you know, and, and sometimes people will disagree with those.
Right.
And that just unfortunately kind of happens.
And in most cases, my guess is that difference between the dot and the end of the feedlot.
Yep.
Isn't gonna.
No.
Put right through the middle of a property.
And that's what this.
It's just that's one.
This parcel is so narrow.
Yeah, it's very narrow.
It's what, two hundred feet wide?
So if you move it to the outside of them, it encompasses the whole. So is it defined somewhere? I mean, when you said I, I need to learn more, it's, where did you learn? What we were talking about earlier.
Uh, so this, I mean, we can get, try to get some general answers because it is not in, this would not be a zoning. A lot of this starts to get outside of zoning, you get into more of some of the feedlot type things. So that's where, when we get any application, what we do is we send that to, how many referral agencies do we have now?
There's like twenty some.
Yeah, and so basically we blast that sucker out and then everybody provides us with comments and feedback. And then what our job is, is to kind of summarize that in our reports and then kind of come forward.
And you, you see that because there'll be letters attached to your Ps from, you know, and police are controlling. But I was trying to just get an answer to your question, where you asked earlier, how do I know?
Well, and one thing I have done now is I've signed up to get all the notifications for our township. So that way, because I want to be more informed as to what's going on, so when something like this does come up, I can look into it.
Were you at this one? You said, why did this come through iPad?
Why didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Variants.
Cause of the.
So anyway, anything else to go ahead with?
So just Virgil has to be the one that has to file to get it removed. Good, and I just don't want to follow for tomorrow.
Yeah, thanks for giving me.
If I tell him, it was, it was a lesson learned.
Yep.
Cause there was just.
Well, but I.
Down basically, he didn't have the perimeter, using them where the dot.
I need to be a little careful of what I say.
Yes, he's not gonna care.
No.
The learning curve.
I would, I mean, we can get the technical explanation if, and we will, but I wouldn't say that there was any errors made because I'm pretty sure that there were not.
Right.
But it's, if you have to have a point on a map in which you take it and then you do that based on what is defined, so. It might have been the difference in this case of the point is the point in the middle, and if you take the point and you go at the end, that difference could be part of the bus.
Yep.
And so, so regulations might say you point it, but I think just to kind of look in and we'll, we will get that for you. And then, and for.
Normally, the, the lot sizes are large enough to where they could buy a five acre lot and they've got three and a half acres they can build a house on. They've only got one, one point five that they can't. So normally it's not an issue. This one just happens to be very.
At this point to appeal, you need to go to district court. I mean, that's really the information.
Yeah, definitely.
That's where you're at.
That's it.
That way.
This is what I learned, you know.
You need to take it to court.
Had discussion.
So is the.
It's another thing with Angela's List is to.
I'll send it to your neighbor next.
Would you want me to read?
No.
But I, I would like to talk about that half mile setback and subdivision, because I just feel like, we've really put a lot of houses, as long as it's an active feedlot, inactive and phantom feedlots, I, I understand that they're, they're not in existence. And it's gotta be, in our township, it's gotta be over thirty AM, to be considered a feedlot.
Over thirty.
Under thirty AM units, you don't have to get a registration, you can just have them. That is something that I, I didn't realize.
And I think.
Thirty was a magic number.
I didn't remember being thirty, but we did that so then if somebody has six horses, they don't violate some feedlot.
Yeah.
Oh, so Adam, just, just the concerns here from Virgil is that they will complain? Like, what is, what is the, um?
Virgil's an older gentleman, very set in his ways. And he, he just doesn't want the house there, but then he's also concerned about his feedlot. He feels like the landlord next to him has more rights than he does now because he's, we've allowed this house to be built inside that quarter mile.
What, what rights is he worried that they have, that?
Well, why do you have a rule? There's a rule. I'm thinking that older gentleman thinks there's a rule.
Yeah.
And now it's broke.
Yeah.
And he, which is what we thought, and that's what we thought earlier, but.
I understand.
Thank you.
I was wondering why the rule was put in place. I guess I'm just asking, like, what is the protective, why is that right there?
Why is that smell?
Smell.
It's the festival, or dust.
Okay.
With livestock, you have. Bring it out.
All of it.
So it's, it's basically a two-way protection because people next to it don't want to be dealing with dust.
Yeah, but we don't want to worry about, I don't want other people to have to smell it.
Right.
You know?
But then this, the farmer must be able to do what he or she has been doing for a long time without worry.
The orange is just right, I can smell it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It can be.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm a sharing kind of guy.
The concerns he had, of course, were that the new people were gonna build this house. They were gonna complain to the point where he would lose his land, you know, you know, lose everything because we've allowed a non-farm parcel on that four point six two acres.
Is that a realistic worry?
No. I said, if, if they complain.
He, but he said some things today that will get complaints. I'm like, Virgil, you can't do that.
Oh, boy, that's a whole nother. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's gonna end up being outside of our realm.
Yes.
Yep.
Good luck, Tom, Marty.
Well, it's kind of like a great example of residents being concerned about something. We had a garage built that was fifteen feet or so closer to the setback, or farther away from setback, whatever that was supposed to be, right? Fifteen feet was the, and we were going to approve this permit. And the neighbors were really concerned about, like, what if our tree falls on it as a garage now? Because he's fifteen feet closer to that setback, what's that mean? And we said, call your insurance company, the homeowners, like that's, there's only so much the town board and planning and zoning can do, right? So we, we hear their concerns, but there's only so much we can cover.
And it's hard to like operate according to what ifs.
You know, like.
And surprise, have you held on your health, your insurance company?
Your insurance covered, not the reasons for you, unless they neglected it, it was dead. If it was a live tree, then it's not gonna get your insurance. Just so you know.
Experience with this.
No, and I'm finding that, I'm just paying attention to.
You're very observant.
Yes.
I'm observing the motion to adjourn, yeah.
Are you ready to leave?
I was making sure, you know.
I moved we during meeting.
It feels like it's a name tag.
Who was the second?
I don't have a second yet. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Richter and the Senator Collins to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There votes aye, motion carries.
You get to go in later.